Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 2nd, 2021 City Council meeting. It is 7:00 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mason Okubo from Emmanuel First Lutheran Church, and Councilwoman Diaz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Father in heaven, as you are authority over all authorities, I ask your wisdom to be upon our city council that they may carry out your will in guiding our city. We receive them as a gift from you. Bless their willingness to serve our city. Send your Holy Spirit among us that we might work together in harmony for the good of the people of West Covina. Thank you for all who give of their time and talents to serve our city, and we ask and thank you with this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do I hand over your heart?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Tabun Spai. President. Councilman Wu.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Castellanos.
Here.
Mayor Lopez Viado.
Present. City attorneys, are there anything to be reported at a closed session?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay. I would like to note that due to an unexpected emergency, the presentation by the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District has been moved to a future city council meeting date and will not be given this evening. So before moving to oral communication, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of City of Duarte Mayor Brian Urias. Brian Urias tragically passed away at his home on Sunday, October 24th. Mayor Brian Urias was first elected to the Duarte City Council in November of 2018 representing District 6. He was a lifelong resident of the San Gabriel Valley and pillar of his local community. May he rest in peace and our deepest condolences to his family. We will now move to oral communication. If anybody would like to address the city council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the deputy city clerk. Deputy City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Mayor, we have five speakers.
Five? Okay, go ahead.
Our speaker, our first speaker is Deborah Johnson, followed by Matthew Buck from the California Apartment Association, followed by Bill Rue from Citrus Valley Association of Realtors.
Good evening, Council, city staff, residents here in attendance, and those watching from home. My name is Deborah Johnston, and I am the president of the Confidential Bargaining Group. I have been selected to speak on the behalf of four of our nine employee bargaining groups within this city in regards to items on your agenda this evening. The group I am representing here this evening are from the mid-management, maintenance and crafts, general and confidential employee bargaining groups, which is comprised of 22% of the city's full-time workforce. We have a total of 68 members within these four groups. This is 68 out of 300-plus current full-time staff within the city. These groups whom I speak for this evening are mid-managers, inspectors, maintenance workers, electricians, analysts, accountants, coordinators, and various clerical and administrative support staff, and many, many more. The majority of our members have dedicated five to 35-plus years of service to the city of West Covina. We are the first person that residents have contact with when they contact the city. We are the, and deal with the city daily. We have been here through the various ups and downs of the city, and we will continue to be the foundation, supporting the residents, customers, and staff of this great city for many more years to come. We are here to speak on item 7, 8, 9, and 10 on your agenda this evening. We would like to extend our continued appreciation to the city management and staff and their hard work and dedication during this negotiation season. The efforts and work that they have put together unto the items before you this evening is not always an easy task. They came to the table, had open discussions with our representatives, and both sides listened, listened to the needs of the city, residents, management, and our members. The hard work and dedication to this process, all by all, has produced the agreements before you for your consideration this evening. These efforts by the city management and staff is always greatly appreciated, and we look forward to the continued teamwork for many years to come. We would also like to extend our great appreciation to the dedication and efforts of the council during your tenure and in relation to decisions before you this evening. We look forward to hearing your discussions and actions taken regarding this item. Thank you for your time and consideration of approval of these agreements before you this evening. From our members to you, we wish you a good evening. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Buck from the California Apartment Association, followed by Bill Rue, followed by Teresa Cozad.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. My name is Matthew Buck. I'm with the California Apartment Association. It's been a few years since I was here. I see some new faces. Welcome aboard. I just want to let you know, we'll be reaching out. The California Apartment Association is the largest apartment association in the country. We represent all of California, and then some of our interests are beyond the state. But we do have members here in West Covina as well. I'll be reaching out to you guys. There's a lot facing our industry. There's a lot of challenges facing our industry. So looking forward to sitting down with you guys in the next couple of months, hopefully, and sharing our insights and knowing what you guys have planned for the city of West Covina moving forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Rue from the Citrus Valley Association of Realtors, followed by Teresa Cozad, followed by Jim Grivage.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, I'm Bill Rue, Governmental Affairs Director for the Citrus Valley Association of Realtors. Many of you have seen us throughout the valley at different events. We are making our rounds through all of the cities, letting them know that we are back since August, operating, we're fully functional, we're here to work with all of our cities. Our 7,200 members, many of them are right here in West Covina, a lot of them throughout the San Gabriel Valley. We appreciate the efforts you've put into this, and Mr. Buck said earlier about the last time he was here. I remember the last time in this building, we were sitting with Kaiser Ringwaller while he's going over your housing element, and we thought it was really amazing how you did that. I also want to commend all of you tonight for taking time to adjourn in the memory of Brian. He was a longtime personal friend of mine from days before he worked for Hilda the first time around, and it certainly came as a shock to me and to, sorry, to many others. We appreciate everything you're doing. I'm going to leave my cards with the city clerk, deputy city clerk, and if you ever, we'd like to sit down and talk to you as we're reopening and you're reopening on any of the issues that are going around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Cozad, followed by Jim Grivage, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening. Please don't take anything I'm going to say personally. I just need to get things off of my chest, okay? I'm here to talk about two issues that affect the health and the welfare of the residents of West Covina. The first one is Amazon. The area where Amazon is located is my neighborhood, and according to the latest housing element that I've been slowly trying to get through, that, the area where I live and north of the freeway has been designated a lower-income area. So my question to all of you is why is it that lower-income areas are disproportionately affected by what manufacturing brings to them, which is pollution and more traffic? And are areas going to be highly affected by that from Amazon? I'm now looking at the trucks that we have going through, and there are going to be so many more. Also, do you realize that there is a school that is less than a block away? Those kids play outside. Those kids have to walk across the street where all the traffic is going to be happening. I'm just really concerned about that, so I wanted to bring that forth. And I also wanted to mention that, Mr. Wu, you said that, or Councilman Wu, you said that some of the money from Amazon will be going into a special fund for community development. To me, that seems like you're trying to buy the health and the safety of the residents of West Covina, and that should not be happening. No money is going to make it better. My second issue is the unnecessary creation of a health department to run by the city of West Covina. Today, I happened to learn in the newspaper, I wish I had learned from the council members about what is going on with the health department. We get no updates, none whatsoever. If you don't want, I feel like you don't want us to know what's happening. So I read the newspaper today, or I tried to. I don't get the Tribune, so it's really hard to read it when you don't get it. Anyways, what I read is that the services are going to be outsourced to other entities. So to me, that says, it's not really going to be West Covina's health department. It's going to be run by everybody but West Covina. So my question is, again, why are you playing with the money, the health, and the welfare of the residents of West?
Our next speaker is Bill Elliott, followed, oh, I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Jim Grivage, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by Sharzad Shisigar.
Jim Grivage. Tonight, I'm a little bit different than normal. I'm going to report that I'm pleased with the results of the negotiations and the contract settlement with your employees. As you, I'm, I think it's a very reasonable settlement, and I'm especially pleased about the section that has increased the employees' contribution to their retirement. I think that's long overdue, and I appreciate the fact that it's finally happened, and I hope that feature is extended to all employees. Of course, I couldn't comment on this without saying it's still missing the financial analysis that I think all your major financial decisions should have. There's no estimate of cost. I, I think that's remiss, and it should be there. For the record, I thought about giving you my own financial analysis and decided not to. It was covered in the newspaper this morning. Just for the record, I don't think your deficit this year is going to be quite as bad as the newspaper had to say, mainly because I think your revenues are going to be better than were originally budgeted. The expenditure part that was in the newspaper was fairly accurate, but, but since your revenues would be a little better than was budgeted, I think your deficit won't be quite so bad. But it's still an issue, and I hope this council addresses it. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Elliott, followed by Sharzad Shisigar, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening, City Council. I am the real Bill Elliott. I wanted to talk to you tonight about the center medians, but first, I want to just thank the West Covina maintenance workers, because those guys really work hard, and they're unsung heroes. And thank you to the city council for honoring them at the State of the City event. When was the last time you saw a maintenance worker up on a stage getting an award? These guys deserve a hand. They really do. I'm glad to see things are moving along contractually and settlement and all. The medians, you know, I don't know who the gentleman is that runs Public Works that the city has hired, but he could not explain anything. He couldn't answer one question when he was up here with Mike Cressup. It's like it was a hot potato. The three of them were just tossing each question. I don't know. Do you know? I don't know. I have to check all the way through a year. You know, I've been here two years, you know? It's like... He made a suggestion that when the unification project moves forward on the center medians, on Azusa and on Vincent, that we could just run a water truck by there once a week, and that would suffice. And that's the dumbest idea I ever heard. My dad used to tell us, if you're going to do a job, it's worth doing right. And we have infrastructure there. We have sprinklers there. We have reclaimed water there. It's all there. It just needs to be fixed. And please don't go off half-cocked and plant all this upgrade that we're going to spend money on, and thank God it's moving forward, because those center medians, they've been horrible for 15 years. I really like the city manager's term lunar surface. That's what it looks like. It looks like the moon, and I'm really happy to see that moving forward. Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. And please abandon any idea of putting a water truck past there once a week. It would destroy anything that's growing there, and, you know, you can't plant all cactus. My wife and I were driving through El Monte last night, and we passed by a center median, since that's the issue of the day. We passed by a center median, and there were like, I don't know what the plants were, because we were going about 30 miles an hour, but they looked like some kind of reeds coming up out of the center island at different levels, and there were lights beneath the reeds, and it was really beautiful. They might even have been succulents. You know, I like to see color myself, but anything would be an improvement on what we have now, and so I really want to thank the city council for moving forward that. Also, I didn't speak after the State of the City address, but wow, that was quite the event up there. I was really stunned at the multipurpose tent-looking structure. Councilman Wu told me they referred to it as the arena, the soccer arena. It's really a multi-use. Wow, what a fabulous venue we have here in West Covina now for large events, and I really see a lot of success coming from that effort, and I do think there are some lighting issues. It was kind of dark when we were walking to the car. All the sidewalks that led to that pavilion area was kind of dark, so maybe some thought about that. Mr. Grivage said something else I wanted to comment on. It was nice to hear him compliment the council. That was really refreshing. We all know Jim's a smart guy, and, you know, I think he knows what he's talking about most days. Understanding it, though, and bringing it all together with a bow on top is a hard challenge sometimes, but I really applaud the city council for everything they're doing. I know the city manager's working hard, and also the new assistant city manager, I'm looking to see some great things coming out of her, and I think she's really capable and competent, and we'll see. I don't feel so confident in the public works director. He was doing a song and a dance up here, and I told him outside, you know, you didn't have any answers for, about anything. And he goes, well, you know, make a complaint or something. You know, he was sarcastic, not very humble, if you ask me for, I'm sure what he's being paid is a pretty handsome sum. Okay, thank you, City Council.
Our next speaker is R. Robinson, followed by, I mean, I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Sharzad Shisigar, followed by R. Robinson. Mr. Robinson.
So, good evening, Council. Bill Robinson, resident. I urge you to vote no on the Amazon Zone Change, number three on the consent calendar. Also, we're renewing the local emergency again, and I've stated before, where's the emergency? State law in most states limit an emergency to 90 days. A legislature can't respond to an emergency. The administrator has to deal with a real emergency, but we're almost two years into this, and this emergency item is a charade. So I urge you to stop that. Also, on your obsession with a, with a public health department for West Covina, my comments tonight on that is many people and their children have decided they need to be lab rats and participate in, in the continuing experimental gene therapy program so oligarchs and billionaires can make even more money. They want to forget the vaccine injury data via the government VAERS database, because the major media monopolies controlled and largely funded by Big Pharma have not chosen to share that information with the general public. So informed consent cannot be given to the victims of the gene therapy program. Nobody knows what's in the jab, so a lot of people just blindly choose to just line up and drink the Kool-Aid. This just-published COVID-19 Bregan book, I've, I've almost finished reading this. It's a 50, it's a 50/50. I've, I've read better books, but it's all right. I discussed, I discussed this at the last meeting. Many of the largest pharmaceutical companies that are sponsoring the current, current emergency are convicted felons, and, and they have profited handsomely from the solutions that have been thrust upon us, contrary to American traditions of constitutional freedoms, and are being mandated and thrust down the public throats, threatening people's jobs for no good reason, especially since the factors of natural immunity by those with healthy immune systems are being totally ignored. People are dying, not just of COVID, but also of vaccine effects, and big profits are being garnered by the pharmaceutical industry. And I repeat, they've been, they've been felony convicted. These companies that are manufacturing the jab have been convicted of fraud, corruption of science, and the unscrupulous aims of, of getting drug approval from the FDA while minimizing adverse effects, and, and millions in fines levied by American courts are just another ongoing marketing cost to these companies. You wonder why drugs are expensive? The, the industry operates like a massive criminal syndicate. This is not a conspiracy theory. It's an actual profitable conspiracy, and, and it's been going on for, for decades because the FDA and actual responsible regulators are just sock puppets of the, of the industry. So I'm reading to the day again, the vaccine cult has struck again. The CDC Vaccine Advisory Panel today unanimously recommended Pfizer's COVID vaccine for children 5 to 11, despite concerns raised during the meeting about Pfizer's clinical data and the fact that children who previously acquired natural immunity to COVID were included in the clinical trials.
Can we have the next speaker?
Our last speaker is Sharzad Shisigar, followed by JD.
Good evening. I know how hard it is to be in your positions, and I do appreciate all of your efforts in the city council. I do. But I am disappointed. I did a lot of research on the Amazon situation regarding, you know, job creation, all their statements about job creation, and I did a lot of research, spent several hours. I brought it to the city council meeting, and it just seems like it was not heard, and I worry about that for you guys. I mean, you know, city council, I feel like they should be listening to the residents when they're in opposition of something, and at least when you vote, indicate why you're voting that way, despite what the opposition says. So I would really appreciate more explanations on your end when you actually make decisions about things, to explain your position. The other thing I'm here to say is that the health department, I am concerned about that as well. I know you have your reasons for wanting it, but I, I still am asking the council to rethink this position, because I think it's going to cost us a lot of money that I worry we don't have as, as a city, and I still don't know how we're going to pay for it. So whatever you can do to help us understand that better, that would be my pleasure. Thank you. So I am opposed to agenda number, agenda regarding the, the Amazon situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is JD.
Good evening. I'm up here to ask some questions about the housing needs assessment. The report that was due October 15th, was it submitted, and was the, was that the final version? Are we expecting to receive a response in terms of either certification or what the state is criticism of it? I was a little disappointed after seeing it, that I didn't get an invitation like Ms. Poltrus did from Mr. Carmody, but, well, you know, what can I tell you? But I, on a serious note, I really like to know if you could tell me, define what a unit means? Is it a one-bedroom, three-bedrooms? What does unit mean? That's, I think is important in terms of your responsibility, the responsibility delegated to the council from the state to create this capacity for an increase from 800 approximately to 5,000 units. That's quite a bit. I think as earlier speaker mentioned, the distribution of this capacity is also very important, because if a housing project, I think they're calling it an affordable housing project, anything similar to San Fernando Gardens or Liso Gardens comes to West Covina, I'd rather see it in Mr. On Cortez than on Larkout, to be honest with you. So if you can hopefully get those questions answered, I appreciate it. And I also saw on the report a date for the first meeting on this subject, but not a date as, a completion date for the first town hall meeting, but I'm going to assume that was the one that just passed. Will there be a second town hall meeting on the housing element, and if so, when? Finally, when we were going through bringing marijuana stores to West Covina, the planning commission under the auspices of Jeff Anderson made available to the residents the possibility of subscribing to email notification. So I don't have to wait for that invitation from Mr. Carmody. I would, I, whichever resident in West Covina would like to be notified, sign up and be informed of the meetings. I think that would help in terms of council's responsibility of getting the word out to residents, because I noticed the first group that came up was thinking, was saying how thankful they are that they're able to serve the residents. So that makes us stakeholders. So you really need to let us know what's going on, whether it's the health department or this housing element situation. And like earlier speaker said, it's a little bit problematic when we're getting the information from the Tribune when... from the Tribune, when many of us come here on a regular basis and ask for that information and often receive the same thing we might end up getting tonight, and that's no response. I'm hoping I can at least get an answer to two of those three, four or five questions that I've asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there are no other speakers. However, I must note that there is one in opposition to item three and another individual in support of item 12 who have chosen not to speak.
City Manager, may you please respond to the public comment concerns?
Good evening, Mayor, and Council members of the public. I'll try and briefly respond to the questions that were posed tonight. We had a goodly number of our employees here tonight speaking in favor of collective bargaining agreements. I'd like to thank them all publicly for their dedication to that process. I mean, California law is quite clear on how we bargain over labor and benefits, and I think people came to the table in good faith, and what's on your agenda tonight with the recommendation for approval is the result of that, it's the fruit of that labor. So thanks to the employees for being here. The representatives from the Apartment Association, Association of Realtors, I'll follow up with those gentlemen and be in conversation with them during office hours as well. If they're interested in improving intergovernmental relations and understanding what the city's doing in some of these areas that are relevant to those organizations, I'm happy to share. We had a couple speakers talk about the state of the city. I would just highlight for those that haven't had a chance to see it, it is on the city website, on the YouTube channel for the City of West Covina, and I think it's a pretty succinct summary of the city's accomplishments, and I would commend that to those that are interested in glancing at that, I think it's worth a look. Couple of our speakers spoke about the Amazon matter, the green law development application, which is returning tonight for ordinance second reading and the development agreement for approval. The public hearing was previous, both at the Planning Commission level and in front of this council, but we're recommending tonight that it be ratified. Couple speakers asked about the Health Department. We are continuing to update status here in these meetings, and I'll just remind folks that the State of California Department of Public Health has assigned some high-ranking individuals to review our application for a Health Department. It's something that hasn't been done in, you know, 100 years. I think they're taking it very seriously, and they're working quite closely on two things. They are working on a formal application process by which West Covina and any other municipality or county could apply to have a state-certified Health Department. They haven't finished with that work yet, but we're meeting with them regularly, there's another meeting this week. Secondly, they're also going to promulgate, under the Director's authority, Health and Human Services Director, they're going to promulgate emergency regulations that would govern startup Health Departments. Once those regulations are published, we haven't seen them yet nor has anyone, but there will be a public review and comment period for a number of days, and we intend to comment, and we encourage all residents that are interested to follow that. We've got a number of documents on the City Manager's webpage about Health Department status, and people are welcome to review those and to offer comments should they have any. Finally, we had one speaker asked about the housing element. We are now in the throes of trying to gain regulatory compliance in a number of these areas. We talked previously about the upcoming state laws for recycling, which has now been shifted to the local level. I think the only thing we can say about the state regulations for recycling is that nobody likes them, but we're going to do our level best to come up with something that complies. Likewise, with the housing element, that document is in draft form, you can find it on our city webpage. We've got a survey out now inviting people to offer comments, those that were unable to come to the town hall meeting, and I believe the State of California Department of Housing Community Development will take months to review our document, but before we send it off, local resident comments would be most welcome. I think that's all I've got this evening, unless there are questions. Oh, can I have a go back? Apologize. I wanted to introduce publicly to the Council and to the community our new Assistant City Manager Roxanne Lerma. Roxanne, would you come to the microphone? I have surprised her now, which is something we try to not do, but I would ask her if she could just briefly tell us a little bit about herself and how she's going to fit into our team here. Welcome, Roxanne.
Thank you, City Manager Carmody. Mayor, members of the City Council, I am so pleased to be able to have the privilege to serve you as well as the residents of the City of West Covina. Just most recently, I served a tenure, literally ten years, at the City of La Puente, and I held the position of Director of Community Services. Prior to my time in La Puente, I also served in the Community Services Department of both Walnut and the City of Yorba Linda. I have a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in public policy and administration. I am eager to get started, eager to serve the community, and really eager to make the events and the services here in the City of West Covina relevant to the residents of West Covina. So thank you again for welcoming me, and I look forward to getting to know the rest of the staff as well as the community. Thank you.
On to your City Manager's report.
Okay, have anything else?
Okay. So on to consent calendar. Councils, are there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull number two.
Number two? Anything else?
One and three?
One and three. Okay, anything else? So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items one through 12 with the exception of one, two, and three?
So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Madam Mayor, before I take roll, I'm obligated to read the ordinance titles up for adoption. Is that all right? Ordinance number 2473, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving code amendment number 20-04, code amendment related to residential agriculture RA and single-family residential R1 standard. And also ordinance number 2492, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Article II Video Franchises of Chapter 11 Franchises of the City of the West Covina Municipal Code to establish a public, educational, and governmental fee on state video franchises operating within the City of West Covina. With that being said, on to roll call. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez-Vienna?
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. Now, before we continue, I just wanted to mention, I know we have the city staff here, that since agenda items seven to 12 passed, I just want to say congratulations. Before being in council in 2018, we saw here the layoffs that occurred with all the maintenance, and that was actually a very sad day. And today, to negotiate a contract like this is unheard of, to have both sides to be very happy with that, I wanted to again thank the hard-working staff, and I appreciate this. And before we do, it's my last term anyways, and being mayor, I actually want a group photo with all our hard-working staff that are here today, and we greatly appreciate you saying the thanks to us. I know we get a lot of thankless job, and for you to be here tonight means a lot. So I'd like a group photo before we move forward, and then they could go home. It's a happy day.
It's very positive, and it's very rare we get something positive in the council chambers, so I wanted to cherish the moment. Okay.
Always positive.
Always positive. All right, so on to item number one pulled by Councilman Tabatabai. Go ahead, proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not sure if this question's for the City Manager or City Attorney, but so other cities in the San Gabriel Valley have ended their local emergency, and I understand that our emergency order was based on this eligibility for COVID-19 reimbursement, but because of the state emergency, is the local emergency still necessary in order to get those COVID reimbursements? Okay, so then those other cities who've ended their local emergencies, they're no longer able to get those reimbursements?
For COVID-related work after that date, they've ended it, yes. That make sense? They've stopped it, so any COVID-related work, then they would not be reimbursed.
Okay, so from March 2020, the City of Covina has not been able to receive any COVID reimbursements? Is that, they ended it a week after, 2020?
I have a question. It's that, okay, West Covina is a full-service city, we have a police and we have a fire department, and Covina doesn't have a fire department, they use the county service. So I think maybe City Manager can answer, is that the reason? Because we have a fire department, we get a lot of reimbursement due to the COVID-19 issue?
Through the chair, I would answer the question in this way. The Governor's Office of Emergency Services has the authority to declare an emergency. I think experts in this state believe that the Governor has continued it should COVID cases spike. In this county, we've had north of 70,000 deaths, and we don't know what's going on next with respect to variants and need for local response. We do know that as we are able to access these state and federal funds, it's in our interest to do so. Should some order need to be issued, I would certainly bring it to you all immediately, but just on a fiscal basis, I would recommend that you adopt this tonight and keep it in place.
So have we begun to look at when we would be comfortable with ending the local emergency? As other cities are ending theirs, have we, again, set a standard where we would feel comfortable as a city to end ours? Is it just?
Through the chair, I would think when the Governor says we're done, then we would follow that law. We've certainly been following all his Health Department orders because he's got to manage a crisis. But I don't know how it's in our interest to stop a state of local emergency if it affords us access to these state and federal monies. Why other cities wouldn't, doesn't make any sense to me, but I could ask them if you like, just doesn't track in my mind.
Move the motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
No.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez-Vienna?
Aye, motion passes, 4-1. On to item number two pulled by Protem Castellanos. Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So number two's for a FEI study. I would like to have staff to give us an overview of the proposed study, why we need it, how it will help, and any details you can give, please.
Through the chair, if I may attempt to be the staff on this, our Deputy City Clerk Lisa Sherrick wrote this report, and she's out, but I will be a poor substitute for her as the author of this report. California law requires that city municipal fees equate to the cost reasonably borne in the provision of services. So this is a holistic and comprehensive look at all of our city fees. It's a lot of spreadsheet work, it's a lot of detailed work looking at what's behind the fees that are in place, and then once that work is concluded, it'd be brought to the public and to the council for your consideration. Sometimes councils in that moment decide there's a rationale for subsidizing a fee. Parks and Rec fees are the classic example. They say, well, we want to encourage kids to swim, so we'll price entry to the swimming pool at 50% of its cost. But the price is up to you, and the cost is what this study will determine. We do have representatives of this consultant here tonight if you'd like to ask questions, but I really think this is a good management tool, and I would recommend you proceed with it. We put it out to bid, we got a couple of bids, this is the low responsible bidder, and though I've not worked with the firm, they are known by reputation to be a solid firm, and I think it's a good effort.
Okay, I have an issue with this spending, okay, because we have building a safety fee, we just revised, okay, I think we increased quite a lot, okay, and that time we didn't use the consultant, okay, and then we base on the market and the county and the other city comparison. So I don't know why we have to spend $100,000, okay, 900-something, okay, $90,000-something to do this. So, okay, I'm just, okay, I don't know, okay, if the park fee this or that, I think that we can make a comparison, okay, and to some other city how they charge, and we have the professional, Razan, okay, and she maybe can give us some input about the park fee and how the rental fee, facility fee, et cetera, et cetera, and she can give us a proposal, right, and we spend, okay, almost $100,000 on the consulting fee. It's not like I against consulting fee, but I against the consulting fee. It depend on how that basically used properly, okay, and possible you justify, but I don't know, okay, will that justify for our FEI study? So since we already done this 2017, and I think there's a business license fee, and then while we are, okay, that time we tried to do based on the employee or based on the revenue. So we have a study in 2017, so can we use the 2017, okay, study one, then get a new one after that only like three, four years? So anyway, this is my concern.
I understand. I think as this, if I can answer through the chair, I think this is a step as the city continues to work toward financial responsibility and sustainability. It's a requirement of the state auditor, it was something in our financial recovery plan that we said we would do. I think it's less relevant to do a comparative of what other cities charge, because we don't know the basis of their fees or what staffing they put into them or level of effort goes into their charges, but actually a job costing for every one of our activity centers. Another thing it'll do for us is it'll give us a cost allocation plan that'll give us a federally eligible overhead rate. Think of the third floor at City Hall and all those things that might be then assignable to state and federal grants, the City Attorney's Office, the HR Department, the Finance Department, the City Manager's Office. But I think as a result of this, there's going to be a lot of data come forward, and I think it'll be data that'll be very useful to us. Certainly, it's not a requirement of state law, but it's something that the state auditor asked us to do and we agreed to as part of our recovery plan.
Does it have a question?
Okay, with all this FEI study, okay, meaning what's the benefit, okay, and maybe we can have more detail rather than decide tonight, because if we decide tonight, we're going to spend almost $100,000, okay? I know we're doing pretty good, but I still want to spend the money conservatively, okay? And possible this is needed, but I really need more of a detail to see the proposal, okay, and maybe we can have a consultant to talk to the Council, okay, regarding why we need this, what's the benefit? So I want to, okay, make the motion to, okay, table this, okay, for the...
Yeah, I agree. I like the idea of complying with the...
know the basis of their fees or what staffing they put into them or level of effort goes into their charges. But actually, a job costing for every one of our activity centers. Another thing it'll do for us is it'll give us a cost allocation plan that'll give us a federally eligible overhead rate. Think of the third floor at City Hall and all those things that might be then assignable to state and federal grants, the city attorney's office, the HR department, the finance department, the city manager's office. But I think as a result of this, there's going to be a lot of data come forward. And I think it'll be data that'll be very, very useful to us. Certainly, it's not a requirement of state law, but it's something that the state auditor asked us to do and we agreed to as part of our recovery plan.
Let's have a question.
Okay, with all this fee study, okay, meaning what's the benefit, okay? And maybe we can have more detail rather than decide tonight? Because if we decide tonight, we're going to spend almost $100,000, okay? I know we're doing pretty good, but I still want to spend the money conservatively, okay? And possible this is needed, but I really need more of a detail to see the proposal, okay? And maybe we can have a consultant to talk to the council, okay, regarding why we need this, what's the benefit? So I want to, okay, make the motion to, okay, table this, okay, for the...
Yeah, and I agree. I like the idea of complying with the request of the state auditor. We've taken their feedback very seriously and we've made a lot of progress. But I'd like to know a little bit more, really in-depth about, kind of like what you just mentioned, how it'll help us allocate costs within different departments, which might help us with recovery of other monies and just better planning. So if we could second the motion to table it to bring back a little bit more information for us.
And I actually would like to add to it because I know that it only shows a few fees. And when you say fee study, I'm thinking the whole, it encompasses more than just this for the amount we're paying. So I wanted to just make sure that, what does it encompass of what we're paying? Because there's different types of fees out there.
Well, council, I acknowledge your comments and I recognize we might need some more work on this. So if you're going to table it, I'll do that work and bring it back.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Do we have consensus? Wait, do we have to do a roll call?
Councilmember Tabatabai? Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez-Viado?
Aye, motion passes to table. All right, on to item number three, pulled by Councilman Tabatabai.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. Questions on the community benefit. Are there any guidelines as to how the community benefit can be spent? Does it have to do anything with the programs that were offered by the church and that we lost? Or is the community benefit kind of open-ended?
Through the chair, the community benefit is entirely at the discretion of the council. We had not put forward suggested guidelines, although spending money in this way is typically pretty popular and some fun. So I would like for you to give that some thoughtful consideration. But that decision about what projects and what programs and in what ways these monies are put into use is not in front of you tonight, but we intend to bring that back subsequently.
I had another question on the $200,000 annual payment. So as mentioned by several residents, District One and District Two, specifically the northwest portion of West Covina, is going to be highly impacted. Quality of life is going to be sacrificed. So is there any protection to guarantee that that $200,000 pays for the infrastructure for the northwest section of West Covina? I understand that the $200,000 is going to the general fund. But I think those residents are going to be sacrificing. Is there any kind of guarantee that the infrastructure that's going to be worn away is going to be protected by these monies?
Through the chair, the $200,000 yours that goes toward the general fund would be just for that purpose. All of our general fund expenditures, most of those are in public safety, police and fire. But they're also in myriad of other things, parks and recreation and planning and everything that we do as a city. There's no, been no conversation to this moment that those monies would be specifically designated for one geographic area. We've just got them in there as a general fund contribution. It's a payment to the city in lieu of taxes, but supplements their contribution toward good government. So I guess the answer to that is every year, as part of your budget, you'd have to weigh those things and make some priority-based decisions based on the needs of the community as a whole.
Right, I mean, I understand. I think my concern is the way we've made decisions towards infrastructure, specifically like things like street repair, has been based on an algorithm that didn't include, you know, an Amazon site and those types of things. So I guess is their planning to take that into account when we are now making our decisions in terms of street repair and things like that? That now we've changed, right, this to manufacturing and we're going to be adding these tractor-trailers and the vehicles?
Through the chair, that hasn't been part of our thinking to this moment. And I would really encourage us to preserve the council's right to do what's in the best long-term interest of the city as a whole. I mean, we mentioned streets. We have a pavement management program that does a really good job of quantifying what their street needs are and what the priorities should be. Council reviews that, as you should, but we've not tied it to geo areas or council districts or anything else. And I would continue to encourage you to not do that. I think it's better that you preserve your right to do what's in the best long-term interest of the city as a whole, rather than have these general fund monies be tied to some geo area. I just think we've got genuine needs in the general fund in a lot of areas, buildings and equipments and personnel. And I don't know that we can also designate this general fund money further. And I would caution you that maybe that's not an approach you want to take tonight.
My last question is regarding the 24-hour, 24/7 hotline. Now, I understand that the operator is Amazon, but the delivery service providers are independent contractors, they are not Amazon. And Amazon has made clear that they have no liability and no connection to the delivery service providers. So because most complaints are going to be from the vans and the deliveries, are we going to set up as the city?
Through the chairman, ask the city attorney.
Perfect.
Finish the call. Are we going?
So because all the delivery service providers are going to be licensed through the city as businesses. So is the city, does the city have the capacity to take the complaints and the calls? Is there a process for residents? Because Amazon has stated that the DSPs are not Amazon. So this 24/7 hotline, I guess I'd want some clarification.
The way that the development agreement is written is that Amazon will entertain all those calls. The city is not planning on taking any of those calls.
Okay, but the fact that these DSPs are not Amazon, they're subcontractor...
Notwithstanding that, Amazon, they contract with Amazon, Amazon will entertain those calls.
Okay, and then so those complaints to Amazon, what is the expectation from Amazon to the city, considering these DSPs are going to have their business license with the city?
And what is the expectation?
So what is our expectation when Amazon gets these complaints from those DSPs about those drivers, those vans?
Our expectation is Amazon will address those complaints directly with whoever the individual, whoever the citizen is, whoever it is, they will address those complaints. It's in a development agreement. If they are failing to do that, we have the development agreement there that the city then can step in.
So if Amazon is failing to deal with the subcontractor that has a business license through the city, Amazon is liable for that?
How's that any different than Uber and Lyft?
No, while Amazon has been very clear that they have no liability for their DSP. So I think Uber, those, I mean, I haven't studied the Uber question, but I have studied the Amazon delivery service provider question.
You're talking about liability, are you talking about an auto accident?
Any, yes.
Okay, so they'll carry their own, state law requires them to carry insurance, they'll carry their insurance, and they are protected.
Right, so when our residents are having issues with, let's say, the way the delivery driver delivers the package, right? Because...
That's not the city's issue. That's not the city's, if there's some negligence or a pothole where they get in an accident with a city vehicle, then there's a claim process that they file through the city clerk and we'll address that.
Right, so for the residents, though, because we have this 24/7 hotline.
I think you made it clear that they just contact Amazon. I mean, they take care of that.
I understand.
Just like, they're very, Amazon is, I mean, similar to Uber and Lyft because they are independent contractors as well.
No, but I...
I want to move the motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I had the floor.
Go ahead. I mean, he answered your question, but you're asking him something that like he just answered. I don't even understand your question. That's why you're drilling the city attorney, doesn't make sense.
Well, because I'm trying to get some clarification for the resident.
So is there another question you'd like to say? I mean, he just answered it.
Yes, so what I'd like, so for residents, just to be clear for the residents, this 24/7 hotline that is going to be set up is to deal with all issues beyond just the facility, but also to deal with issues with the DSPs, the vans, the drivers, the deliveries. To call this 24...
Is that clear? And that was a yes?
Any and all complaints will be handled.
Any other?
Accident, and if it's our fault, the city will handle, obviously. And everyone has to have insurance, right? Especially carriers, they have to have insurance. And so that's where the liability insurance comes in to protect any individual that is injured or damaged by...
Okay, and that, the fact that their business license, their business...
Doesn't matter.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
And before we vote, I'd like to add, I mean, I don't get anger towards Amazon. Amazon's a wonderful company that offers great prices. It's saved me a ton of money, a ton of time. It's not going to cause me to buy more. Or I don't think it'll cause anybody else to buy more, just simply because of the fact of expanding their operations. So with that, I'll second Mr. Uzmos' motion.
Roll call?
Madam Mayor, before I take roll call, I'm required to read the ordinance tiles into the record. So ordinance number 2489, in ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, approving zone change number 20-04 to change the zoning designation at 1211 East Bodega Street to Manufacturing M1. And ordinance number 2490, in ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, approving development agreement number 21-01, a development agreement between the city of West Covina and AG West Covina Owners LLC for the development of the Amazon Delivery Station, DAX9 project. With that being said, Councilmember Tabatabai?
Yeah, before I vote, I just want to say I don't understand the level of dismissiveness of resident concerns.
You kept asking the same question over and over and he answered it. So go ahead, he's asking for your vote, Mr. Tabatabai.
The dismissiveness of residents' concerns in defense of Amazon, multi-billion dollar corporation.
Order, please, your vote.
I vote no.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez-Viado?
Aye, motion passes for one. All right, on to Department Regular Matters, item number 13, fiscal year 2021-2022 Capital Improvement Program status update.
Understanding exposure.
City manager, who will present the update?
Our Public Works Director is finding his way to the podium right now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Before I get to the presentation, I just want to mention the CIP program is usually is a five to 10 years program that identifies the capital projects as well as the equipment purchased and provides the scheduling plan and also provides a scheduling of the finance for those plans. Obviously, the delivery is the key issue and there are capital projects that they went through, very complex and sometimes, you know, very lengthy situation to before we get the projects implemented and constructed. And I will get to those process with the presentation. But this tonight and the CIP, part of the CIP report is one to kind of overview the projects that has been completed up to date. And then, secondly, we want to staff, you know, anticipation of the projects that we are doing right now and before, and finish it before the fiscal year, this fiscal year. And then, thirdly, introduce a new information for each of the project to the council. And...
Slides?
Okay, well, I don't know where the presentation...
It's not pulling up or we don't have the slides? Or it's not working? Is it a tech issue or the... Madam Mayor, if you can give us a second, I'm sorry, we're finding it. Okay, thank you.
My turn again. As I mentioned, that the complex process that we go through, part of the CIP project management is obviously project planning, scope of improvements, what we want to do, preliminary cost estimate, that's needed for, to come up with the project cost. And the design phase, which usually we send the RFP out to get a consultant to do the design. And preparation of the bid package document that includes the plans, specification and the cost estimate for the project. And authorization to bid, bidding, bid evaluation and recommendation for award construction. And then, construction itself, and then, construction management and administration. Finally, the project closeout and funding administration. The Capital Improvement Program is divided into seven different categories. One is the building, general, parks, playgrounds and fields, regional, sewer, street and sidewalk, and traffic signals. The first of projects that we completed is the improvements of the Orange Avenue. The debt project was included, pedestrian safety, roadway drainage improvement, including new concrete storm drain, catch basin, curb ramp, and so on and so forth. The cost was $100,000. And that was, that project was completed last October, October of 2020. Payment Management Program. Payment Management Program, we update the city's payment management. Payment Management Program is the planning and budgeting of the city's, all the roadways to determine and plan on what shape they are and what we're going to do and what kind of, the budgeting and planning for next 10 years. And usually, this PMP, Project Planning Management Program, it's needed for the, some of the grants that we get from the state and also the, also the Prop C requires that we have this plan every three years.
A question on the pavement. So this one is, goes hand in hand with the other pavement... A question on the pavement, so this one is, goes hand in hand with the other pavement that comes through, yes?
Yes, it does.
And then, so you are going to project for the next 10 years?
Yes.
Is this, this is the project that you're doing to project?
We started it in 20, you know, in 2017, 2018, to 19, 20, 2021, and we're going to go down, and then, section by section, the ones that was determined that need to be either improved or replaced or whatever, and then we're going to do that.
So when you review this, you're going to not just review what the other gentleman said based on their theory, but what is really needed in our streets? Though I know it will cost more, but we do want to see those streets repaired. Is that taken into consideration?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure which gentleman you're talking about.
The other, the one who presented, the pavement, what's the name of that? Who did the whole pavement? Is it Ahmad?
It's, it's a different unit within the trans-tech firm.
Okay.
So Okon Demirci and Ahmad Ansari are the people that are really hands-on in terms of the pavement management program and the coordination of that through this CIP process.
Okay, but you are aware of our, the council?
Oh, yes, of course, yes, I am.
And what you want to see with pavement?
I have, yes, I am, absolutely, yes.
So that, that, this is all taken into consideration?
Those are all, yes, taken care of, yes, absolutely. When you said other gentleman, I didn't, it just lost me, I didn't know which gentleman you're talking about.
The one who is presenting, the last one, okay, thank you.
The 2017, 18 residential streets, as you see on that map, it's just rehab improvement is either slurry seal or just cap seal or concrete or asphalt that we did, and that, that cost of that was about $1.4 million, and we did about 1.2 million square feet of the streets. And this project was completed December of 2020. The next project is the Cortez Parking Lot Rehab next to the Citrus Avenue. We did that, you know, just, I'm sorry, that's not that, that's a restroom, restroom renovation at senior center, I'm sorry. Is that it? Nope, I got to go back.
Cortez Parking Lot.
Cortez Park Parking, that, that, that was completed in 2020. And that was part of the, just parking lot, just a whole repair or slurry seal or, you know, pavement. I think the one that I have is different from there, that's why it's. Next, please. Okay, next is the restroom renovation on the senior center. There was a man and a woman restroom was renovated last year, and last January, and it's in service right now. And that was completed, like I said, in January, and it was about, the cost was about $300,000. Next is the 2019, 2020 residential streets. That's, again, part of that pavement, pavement rehabilitation, and there's just the asphalt overlay or slurry seal or concrete curb ramps and sidewalk curbing gutter and so on and so forth, which was, we did about 1.6 million square feet of the street, and the cost was 1.5, $1 million, and that project was completed in July of 2021. And now we go to status of CIP project currently in, we are doing. The first one is the lift station, Zusa Lift Station. This project was started some times ago, and it was delayed because of the, you know, the material, the time took the bar, the pump and motor and switch gears, they took so long, but finally, we got them together, and it's, it's going to be starting by end of this month, the construction will start this month, the contractor is waiting to get his traffic control approval from the County of LA, which County of LA, they're having very much hard time after this COVID thing, and it takes about four to six weeks to, to get the permit going. But this will be, we start by end of this month, and we are, you know, anticipating to finish it in 2022. And 2021 residential street rehab, and this is, as you see, there's a slurry seal and, you know, and asphalt resurfacing, it's about 1.1 million square feet of slurry seal, and asphalt will be done, and it's, it's going to cost almost $2 million, and construction starts, started in June 2021, and we are anticipating, well, actually, we are done with the construction, but because of the, you know, acceptance and going through the county for the, you know, you know, the recoloration and everything, it's going to be completed by December of 2021. The next is the fire station number four parking lot, we, you know, we, we have completed that one as well, and that is just a resurfacing, just finishing asphalt, asphalt with the concrete, and it's about 31,000 square foot of parking lot, and about $300,000 cost, and the, the project is, is complete again, we are just going through the, this, this project closeout is taking time, and it's, we should be done by December of two, this year, next month. Citywide pavement marking, striping, and signage improvement. This project, again, is about traffic calming and safety signature signage and striping improvement, and on various streets, and the cost is about $100,000. Again, the material, you know, it's kind of delaying, delaying our project, and we are still working on that, but we are hoping that, you know, we get everything going, and we finish it up by early 2022. The, excuse me, that's another project that we are looking at, this is just a, one of those regional projects, we are working with our neighboring, with Lark Island and Grove Center Pedestrian Improvement. Again, this is a, you know, the material, you know, it's kind of slowing down, slowing us down, and we are hoping that we finish this project as well by early 2022. That's a major street rehab, is part of the, that PMP, that Zusa Avenue, we are going to be working on that, and we are including council's approval, is taking a little bit of time, we are, you know, they're taking their time to get the approval going, and we are hoping that the design to start in early 2022, early next year. The next project is La Puente Road and Ford Castle, excuse me, new traffic signal over there, and again, installation of new traffic signal, it's, field construction is completed September 20, this year, 2021, and just acceptance and getting the final, finaling the project is taking time, and we are hoping to finish it up by January 22. Next, traffic signaling improvement on Cameron and Branca. This one has been started sometimes, and unfortunately, I keep saying that, you know, the material is delaying on us, you know, it's just, it's just something that everybody is dealing with that, and we are, again, hoping that we can get the material in, get this traffic light in, and we finish it up by early to, you know, 2022. And then, next is the upcoming project, upcoming project is obviously residential streets improvement 2021, 22, and we have the west side of the city, we have a plan on, you know, getting the package out by January 22, and hoping to finish the construction by, and hopefully, by middle of, you know, '22. This is Friendship Park Improvement, you know, you're very much aware of that, and then, again, that then, these, all this equipment is not being delivered, and they're, they keep delaying the date, you know, and we are hoping that we get that, you know, pretty soon, and finish it up by early 2022. Next is the Cortez Park, which same thing, same, you know, and we are trying to finish that up, and then, you know, as soon as we get all this equipment. And next is the, this is rubberized safety surface on the playground for the kids, and, you know, the material, the steel is holding us up, but we are hoping that, you know, that by next month, we will bid this job out, and then, we, we finish it up by January as well. Next is the sewer main replacement, is a part of the sewer main management, sewer management plan, it was determined that a couple of section of the sewer line on the Zusa and Citrus to be replaced, we are currently designing that, and design should be done by end of this month, as soon as the package is ready, we will be getting it out by December, and then, hoping that the construction will take place in two to three months and finish it up by, before end of the fiscal year. The other one is the sewer main replacement, this is the, we are looking at the sewer lines on the south side of the street, the city, and there's lots of line that overcapacity, lot of debris, lot of stuff in the pipe, in the pipelines. Right now, we are doing the videotaping of all the pipelines, and videotaping is almost complete, and we're going to look into that videotape and determine what lines that we're going to be replacing, with the larger size pipe maybe, or what line, we can just line it, and we will make that determination after we look at the videotape and videotaping, videotaping, I have to say that our staff is doing the, the videotaping. Fire station two and four, that's a roof replacement, that package is, excuse me, is out this month, but, I mean, last month, it was out, and should be bidding by mid-December, and we finish it up by first part of the next year, which is '22. Next is the fire station number one, that's a, this is a concept plan, this is not, we have not done any engineering on it, we have not done any, any planning or anything, this is just concept plan that we have, as you see, it shows where does the, where the fire station one is going to be, and the parking lot, we added some parking spaces on the east side of the, the library over there, and this concept plan is just being developed, and it's going to be further studied by, by everyone. The senior center sliding doors, there are 10 sliding doors that we're going to replace. At senior centers, we have, we had a pre-bid walk today, and we had two or three contractors showed up to bid the job, and bidding is going to be in a couple of weeks, and we are hoping that we get that going if the, if the material shows up, but we are hoping that they, they will. Next, next is the fire station one, that's a mechanical building over there, they have about 10 rolling doors that, again, we had a pre-bid, you know, walk today, and that, that is going to be bid in a couple of weeks, we had three, two of the same contractors that showed up in the senior center, they showed up over there as well, and they're going to be bidding the job, and then in a couple of weeks, we will, we will have the bid opening.
Excuse me, I have a question over here, right here, right here, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Mayor, okay, station number one, okay, if we planning to move station number one into that corner, but why we have to spend those money, and how much is the, huh? Yeah, because they're going to demolish later on anyway, because we're going to build a new one, okay, so, so.
It was.
So how much money, and then, maybe, I don't know, one year, they will be demolished? So will that be economic feasible?
I think the fire department, they're using that particular space, and it's not knowing that when, you know, that fire station, new fire station one is going to go, and they want to use those doors, and we're just working with them, and.
We will use, can we use the door, and later on, we use this garage door to someplace else, because otherwise, just waste of resource?
We will look into that, of course.
Huh?
It's going to be, as far as the cost goes, I don't know at this time, but we are, we are looking at that.
We bring back to council, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, because, again, if, if we're going to, okay, no matter what, we're going to do something over there, bring, do the new one, and this just temporarily, and why we put the extra money, and I don't know even how expensive for those roller door? Okay, unless we can reuse, okay, those roller door, okay, then, okay, then, then maybe we can recycle.
After we bid it, that package is going to come to the council for sure, but definitely, as you directed, we will talk to the fire department and bring their, your concern, and if we come back for the, you know, awarding, then we can, we can explain a little bit more on why then those doors or those roll-up doors are needed.
Okay, thank you.
For all the upcoming CIP projects, they're all going to be, that are bidded, they're all going to go to the council, correct?
Yes, yes.
Just checking.
Yes, they are, and last but not least, is the, our median landscape improvements. We already have the design of the landscaping on the medians, and, and then we are, we had, we had, we have a contract with the San Gabriel Conservation Corps to, to come and do this planning and planting for us, and we are, this Thursday, we are, we are having a workshop for the traffic control, bringing them in to kind of teach them how to do their traffic control, next week, we're going to have a walk, and we are planning on starting Monday after next, yes.
Yes, I think we, council mentioned about, okay, if we're going to do this new design, two things, sprinkler system, so, okay, we need to repair, okay, and the second thing is lighting, okay, I know in Azusa, we have outlet, and the once a blue moon, I forgot, 20 years ago, we have a Christmas light on ti, entire Azusa, okay, and avenues look so gorgeous, but this is a long time ago, but I don't know, okay, what we're going to do, okay, and to utilize all those outlet, and plus, we need sprinkler, so have you put it into our bid, or including, so we not only build it beautiful, just for six, seven months, and then they die out, no, we want to keep this forever, okay? seven months, and then they die out? No, we want to keep this forever, okay, for years to come.
Absolutely. We are, some of the sprinkler system, we can restore. But some of them are done. But we, we need to look at the cost of it as well. The, all these landscapes, it's not just the piping, it's the piping just connected to the main line. And then there are backflow devices.
Understand, Mia.
Those are, we need to look at the cost.
Yeah, we, we cannot just build this beautiful landscaping, but without irrigation, period. Okay, because they die.
We are looking into that for sure. And absolutely, you're absolutely.
So are you saying they haven't bid, bid for it?
I'm sorry?
System, they haven't put out a bid for that? Because I mean, looking into it is different than actually putting out a bid or.
Are you talking about the conservation corps?
No, the sprinkler system.
Talking about entire design, okay, entire project.
I, I know that was a big thing that we discussed on the last meeting about not, because remember I said we won't just tolerate, just throwing water? We actually want to fix, fix it, do it right.
Well, the budget is the biggest thing on the irrigation system. We have to, we haven't had time to look at the whole medians to see what needs to be replaced and what needs to be repaired and how we're gonna do it. And the cost of it comes to the, you know, while we are doing this, we are gonna definitely look into the.
Well, the reason why we asked before, when they brought the cost to us, or we saw the median was about 400 something, but we had like 1 million. And so we had like 5, 600,000 to work with. And so that's what I figured.
It's up to 1.5 now.
Or, okay, 1.5 million. So that's why we figured that would include the irrigation. And, and we made it known, the irrigation.
At 1.2, 2.5 million was not, irrigation system was not included.
No, but that wasn't the bid. 1.2 wasn't the bid. It was only 400, 500? That was the bid. But it was less than 500,000. And I knew we had extra money.
We approved 1 million, then you increased to 1.5. So we have second revise. So we approved last time. We believe that this going to be, okay, a median and it's going to last forever. Not going to last just for one year, two years.
Yes. It's not about this.
And we need a maintenance people too, okay. So it's, it's a package. It cannot be just built and we later on, how to keep it continue nice.
The maintenance package is going to go out to bid in a couple of weeks. The one that, you know, the monoposa was done. You know, we, we are going out to bid on that one. And meanwhile, since we are doing the, all the medians, and it's gonna take eight to nine months to do all the medians. But we are step by step, looking at the budget, looking at the, you know, situation and want to see how we going to do the irrigation system.
My only concern is if you work on the medians and then the irrigation after, you're gonna ruin the medians again. So that's why.
Some of the medians, they do have irrigation system, which can be restored. But most of them, they don't. But those are the one that we can restore, we're gonna restore. And the rest of it, we are gonna, we have time to look into it to see how much is gonna be and how we're gonna do it.
So would it go hand in hand with the medians being done at the same time? Or, because from what I'm gathering, looking into it, it looks like the medians will come first, make it all beautiful, and then irrigation after, and then dig it all up again and just do double the work? That, that's, that's what I'm.
I would think that it would be irrigation, electricity, and then we can landscape. That's what I would think.
I, I agree. That's how I do my home. Okay. You need to, the base, put the irrigation, okay. And, and then put a, okay, bury the electric tube, this and that, and make sure everything working. And you plan the.
Especially because everything is underground.
Absolutely true. I agree 100%. But the budget was that constrained for us. And we were looking into how we going.
Yeah, I understand. I, I don't want to listen to budget, budget, budget. Okay, are we talking about if we doesn't do it right, then the budget doesn't mean anything to us. It's waste of money.
Well, that's why we wanted to know how much would it cost, or if it has been out to bid. Because that's a decision that we will make. But if we don't have any numbers or anything to.
Absolutely. We did not look into the total cost, but we estimated probably around million, million, and some change for the irrigation.
So I think city manager, you know our major concern. You, you have to step in.
I understand completely. We have a contract in place for a million five. We think the current cost to do all of the medians that you reviewed at your last meeting is about a million one. We're gonna return with the irrigation as part of that.
And the lighting.
We have enough money in the contract.
And electricity.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're not asking for brand new electricity, just.
Right, just to repair what we have.
Okay.
Any other question?
Sorry.
We not try to bash you, okay. I hope you understand. We just try to hopefully.
Absolutely. I agree.
Okay, and.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Only one time, look nice. But after one year, then everything's so sad, okay?
I concur completely. 100%. You're right.
If I one time, it lasts forever. That's what we want.
Absolutely.
So other people in future can appreciate.
I, I just wanted to say thank you again for the detailed updates. I greatly appreciate that. Sometimes they tell us, but we don't get to see or put it in a bigger picture. So thank you for that. And we love seeing completed CIP projects. So when we, because it goes through so many, so.
Like, we have a lot of delay. Okay, a lot of contractors outside.
I know. The other stuff, I know it's out of our control. Because the materials, I mean, the, the shipping, the cargo, all that stuff, I understand because that, that's just not us. It's everywhere else. So the material, that is excusable. Everything else on the street.
As I mentioned, you know, the street, you know, like 2021 has been completed. We just, the, the, the long lead time is the acceptance and the, you know, recording with the county and everything. You know, the bathroom, the restrooms or bathrooms or, you know, parks, you know, parking lot, all of those are completed, except the paperwork is kind of delaying the, the whole thing.
Well, yes. I mean, besides that, I mean, I think you heard the council's concerns. Is there any other questions from the council? No? I think we, we have to motion to approve, correct? Oh, it's receive and file? Okay. Receive and file. Thank you, Mia. Appreciate it, Mia.
Thank you.
All right. So on to mayor council member reports. City council request, city council comments. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have two quick comments. First, I wanted to thank Angela and Jose Reyes and that District One area that put on a wonderful Halloween.
Citywide, he ended up to citywide.
That, that's.
Citywide, not just the district.
Yeah. So the staff, WCPD blocked out those streets. There were thousands of people there. My family had a wonderful experience. And then I also wanted to acknowledge Sean Granger. Is Sean Granger here? You here? Could you come down, Sean? I just want to acknowledge Sean is gonna be leaving us soon. And, you know, being.
Really? You're leaving? We don't even know.
Yeah. And I've just, you know, this first year, Sean has really taught me so much about just being a civil servant. And I really wanted to just acknowledge and let you.
Sean, you cannot leave till you fix the microphone.
They're on the way. I promise.
Checking the mail.
I really appreciate it. You know, I can't do it without the help of staff and council, for sure. I don't know if you knew, well, Councilmember Wu definitely does. When I got here, I was given the task of completing a $6.3 million IT master plan. It was a five-year plan. We're, I'm happy to say, we're almost 100% done. We have a couple of things that are still in the work. But I'm leaving you with great hands to get everything done.
I need my mic.
That is, that's extra. But, yes, I mean, I, I've been blessed. I've had a, a great staff, a great, a lot of people helped along the way, many, many overnights here. You know, I love West Covina. I, I only live down the street, so you probably will see me again. But I'm, I'm thankful for the five years I've been here. And I really appreciate it.
Sean, wish you the best.
Wishing you the best. Thank you. Any other council comments? I know everybody's talking about, you know, communication within the city. And I, I've mentioned that a few times with the website. But now that we have Roxanne on board, again, welcome. She will be tasked with the communication part, the upgrading, so that our residents can be well communicated and, and know what's going on with our city. So we look forward to that. And we look forward to what you'll bring to the city. So thank you, Roxanne.
Maybe it was Zen to help, help us to fix the mics.
That too.
Two years. We don't have a right mic. Razan, you have an extra task.
Maybe you could teach some of us how to use them.
And it's also good to see things coming back to normal. Lots of special events occurred over the weekend and more to come. And so it's, it's great to see happy faces out there, whether it's the Halloween event, birthday parties, or, you know, whatever it may be. Obviously, being in a safe, and making it safe. So other than that, no other questions, concerns?
Well, before our next meeting, we'll have Veterans Day. So I'd like to thank all of our veterans and wish them a wonderful Veterans Week and Veterans Day.
And we'll see them at the, at our event.
Yes.
At our veterans event.
Is it Thursday, Wes?
Thursday, November 11th. Okay.
Do you have a couple of events? So just put them up.
Okay. Well, that concludes our meeting. And we are adjourned. Thank you.